So close. That clock can never be trusted. Open six o'clock. Um, all right. So first of all, I'm going to make a motion to go to new business. Six B COVID update. Is there a second? Discussion on favor? Welcome, Jennifer.
Um, okay. So you know, we're getting a little spike in cases and probably going to be, you know, be more with everybody getting back to school and those that are still not vaccinated. So right now we're at one.
Okay.
We have one active.
Okay.
I should say. But we had with that, we had six altogether.
Okay.
So it's not too bad. Um, I know Otis and Randall are really shutting things down.
Okay.
Because they're getting hard. So we're not going to do anything at this time. We don't recommend anything. Just normally what you do. If other businesses want to put in that you have to wear a mask going in, then you know, we support that.
Okay.
We'll support them. I already work with the library and things in place. So.
Okay.
I think we're just going to follow the guidelines. I know the governors put it back on us this time around, but I don't see, we haven't had that.
Okay.
If we get a cluster and a vague one or whatever, then you know, we can come back and talk.
Okay. And at that point, we'll revisit and decide if you want to do any mandatory.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. We'll just, yeah.
Okay.
In touch with Josh.
Just so you know, we do have CARES Act funds still available up to December of the end of this calendar year. In case there is some crazy spike and we need to invest in response.
Thank you. And that's on COVID. And then very, very quickly, this is our first official. News letter that the board has been putting out. Don't serve, I mean, just you guys can, but if we don't circle it around yet, because I have to add a couple of things in there. I'm waiting for the library to get back to me on one part.
Okay.
So.
Are you mailing this?
We will be mailing that.
Oh, great.
We are hoping to do that every other month.
That's awesome. Thank you.
It won't be in every month. It'll be unless there's something that really needs to be.
Okay.
Updated or information that needs to be.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, do you guys have any questions? We're good?
We're good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up, I would move to new business item E call for reform at Hampden County Retirement Board. Is there a second? Discussion? On favor? Hi. Um, so we have Mark Gold joining us from Long Meadow Select Board. I know you've got to get back to your select board meeting, Mark. I believe you're on the phone line. I don't know if you want to unmute yourself. I think, okay, let me ask on you. Mark, can you hear me out there in Zoom land?
Yeah.
No, that was Tom scratching. Oh, wait, you are muted.
Okay, are you able to hear me now? I apologize.
No worries. Um, welcome. Thank you for taking time out of your meeting to join us.
Thank you for having me.
I appreciate it. Josh, do you want to sort of do a little preview of what we're discussing?
Mark will get into more detail. I haven't had, since the development of this brought it fully to your attention, there's been some developments that's taken place at the Hand of County Retirement Board. Uh, we got folks along Meadow as well as the town in Hampden, Hampden and other communities that have been joining an effort here to hold the Hand of County Retirement Board accountable for somewhats. I guess through a recent audit, and you'll hear more from Mark on what is perceived as some mismanagement that's been taking place. And so we have a group here that's trying to demand accountability. Um, and so Mark, if you want to just kind of go into more detail by a greater summary and what we're looking to accomplish tonight, that'd be great.
Sure. I appreciate it, Josh. Thank you. As Josh indicated, what we're trying to do is follow up on the audit that was done by PIRAC, which is the State Pension Board on the Hampden County Retirement Board. That audit covered a period of time from 2014 to 2017. So it's still about four years behind, but it uncovered a good deal of irregularities. In fact, you know, they may be either violations of ethics laws or even violations of real laws. But what we've been able to identify is mismanagement of funds to the tune of a minimum of $800,000 over those three years. And what that means to our board and our towns is that we actually have had to pay. And as you know, we're all being upset, the maximum increase every year, eight percent. Because even though the Hampden County Retirement Board's investment with, with PRIM, with the state pension fund is getting very high returns, after their expenses, the returns are significantly lower to the point where they're causing our payments into their system to increase at the maximum amount, eight percent. Have been doing it for the last few years and projecting to do it for the next few years. So our goal is to get accountability for two reasons. Primarily to, because there ought to be accountability. You shouldn't be able to do things that are either unethical or illegal. But more importantly, that we believe these funds are recoverable, either through directors and officers, insurance, or through other means. So that it gives financial support to our community. And so we're pursuing this as a means of getting a, a ruling by immediately the State Ethics Commission. Ultimately, we're looking for the State Attorney General's Office to make additional rulings on legality so that we can then pursue recovery of funds. Again, we, we can, we can identify about 800,000 from that time period. PIRAC will be doing an audit from 2018 through 2021. And if, you know, history shows us anything, there may be additional funds in that period. So that's why we're doing it. What we're looking for is a unanimity or consensus from communities that participate in the Hampden County Retirement Board to support these efforts to A, pursue ethical and legal responsibility and B, ultimately pursue the recouping of the funds. So I think that's my summary. I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mark. Um, no, I, I read the letter that you circulated to the select boards. Um, so I don't have any questions besides what is the next step that you need on from us in order to show our support? Do you need a letter? Um, what's the best next step for you?
Yeah, the best next step would be a, a letter to both myself and Bob Marco, who's from Hampden, just indicating that in future endeavors that we can pass them by you. You know, we wouldn't be sending things without your approval, but that we have your support so that we can add your names to the letters that are going to the, these agencies, telling them that, you know, Western Massachusetts communities are all supportive of action on their part. So I'm looking for really letters of support and email of support from you, knowing that we can count on you and add you into future emailing and mailings.
Okay. Um, do either of my fellow board members have any questions or comments?
The sooner it gets known, the better.
Yeah. Um, yeah, we're absolutely on board to support you with that. Thank you for all the research and work you're doing. We appreciate it.
So I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And if you have any questions in the future, you know, we are trying to keep up to date with what's going on in both reviews by the legal and ethical ethics boards, although the ethics board has informed us on basically that what they do, they do confidentially. And we wouldn't hear very much from them, but we have told them that we're interested in what they're doing. We're really trying to keep the pressure on, if you will, the folks in the eastern part of the state. So they recognize that this is indeed a big deal to us in the Western Mass.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. We, what we'll do is we'll have Josh put together something and we'll sign it and get it out to you this week.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you so much for your time this week.
Thank you for your time, Mark. Have a good night.
Yep. Bye now.
So next up on our agenda.
Motion for four A.
We're going to go, yes, motion to go to, um, four A's. Yes, four A, the hearing for the poll hearing for EverSource. Is there a second? Any discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. So we have, I have Jay McCarthy. Is it? I don't want his names.
So that's Joe McCarthy. So good evening. My name is Michael Rosenberg, Design Supervisor for EverSource. Joe McCarthy is one of the lead designers for the projects. So Joe had represented us at the last meeting and after that meeting, we met with representatives of the town and the town administrator. Apologize for the three and a half year old in the background. And the one and a half year old at the moment. Um, so we met with the town administrator, the representative of the town. We did answer all of the questions I think that we had in front of us. I think we had a good plan put forward about, um, in terms of watermark out, location, construction methods, kind of means and methods. And we're here again to follow up with that. We resubmitted the petition. Um, I think we hand delivered cards and information the two or three days after that meeting. And here we are. So I can answer any overarching questions that may come up. And then for kind of poll specific, that's why Joe's here to also help. So.
Um. Dave, you had a meeting and Josh, who else did you say?
Gordon Avery.
And Gordon was there. I don't think Gordon was with us. Um, did you have any other questions or concerns about the placement of the polls?
There's a couple up there. Are you planning to already get lines on and replace them? Also, the ones with arrows on?
Yeah. So we'll be, I would say from the station, the substation to Gore Road will be replacing in kind, probably almost every pole that's there. And then we'll be installing new midspan poles where the spans are longer than we'd like them to be or that they should be. So there will be a complete infrastructure replacement basically from the station to Gore Road. Go ahead.
What about Gore Road itself? Are your replace poles up there?
Yeah, yeah. We'll be going all the way up to the, uh, where the transmission or where the, right away, the distribution right away crosses the road. So we'll be going right up to that point.
Do you, I don't know if I have the actual map for me. What I have is the precinct. So this is for another item. Question? Yes.
Yeah. Are you planning to move some of those poles back away from the edge of the road? Some are very close to the road right now.
So our rights, as we have them today, are replacements in kind. Uh, we generally replace a pole with kind of a three or four foot radius around the pole depending on wire arrangement overhead and ability to get the equipment in there. We don't usually bring them further onto the kind of resident side of the town taking. Uh, we usually stay where we are. Sometimes a pole will be set aside right behind it, but that's usually about as close as we would go. Uh, we don't want to inadvertently put something on private property when we have rights in the town taking.
Question. Yes, go ahead.
The plan was originally put forward. I came to a meeting and they discussed every tree that was going to be dropped on Gore Road. And then about approximately two weeks ago, there were spacious many trees marked. Can you explain why the difference in the original proposal compared to the trees that are marked now?
I can't specifically right now. Um, I don't know who asked the question. I, was that, is that a resident or someone from the town?
Resident.
Okay. All right. Um, the reason I ask in, Josh, you can help me with this, but when we met after our original meeting, there was a gentleman in the room. We talked about tree removals and tree takings. I think there was a concurrent effort to take down some additional trees on the road. I don't know if they were ash trees, maybe.
I'll, I'll pass it to the highway super here. I think you can answer the question.
Okay.
But I do it.
Yes. Um, we went up last week, went up there and did march some little trees up there. Some were ash. Um, some were some old, some were like right on the edge of the road and needed to be moved. Um, I talked to Bill, I mean, sorry, I talked to Barry.
Yeah.
I also talked to, um, Jim from, I'll ask them. And for us, for the town to move trees later on in the future, it's going to cost a lot of money. This is our opportunity to remove trees that won't cost the town any money. Ash trees, the biggest ones in the river.
Yeah.
Because that's to the whole state, actually pretty much the whole area of the state, a few other states is to remove all the ash trees. They're dying and they're going to fall down. And I don't want the homeowner to have to pay that remove. Or if a tree falls on our line and there's no power. As there's some oak trees up there, there's some leaders up there. There's some on the edge of the road, some smaller trees that are the, the investment being eaten away. So they fall over. For safety. Um, there's four or five large trees. If you go in from the bridge off the hill and around, they are right on the edge of the road. That's, that's a hazard for us and the drivers, the pilots also. Um, I also want to say at the end of this, if anybody had any, any questions, just continue making it, we'll do it.
I believe, Dave, part of it too, the discussion was to add, get some more sunlight in there so that we don't have so many ice issues in the winter.
It has to do with, it's a candidate. You know, the road isn't the greatest.
Is there an intention by the town to make the rope wider? Is that?
Um, no. Need a little wider, but I'm going to have to be ditched first. Open it up, dry it out and redefine our ditches and holes. So I really would like to move the back far so there is more room for, um, bigger ditches and drainage for that road and then do a, a retable over it. Well, maybe it does need to be, but either that or FDR on it. I'm not sure which way. We're going to go yet. We're going to another order to define.
FDR.
Hold that right. As you dig it down, probably roughly 12 inches of the machine. Dig it all up, write that down, and then of course it'll follow it.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. Um, are there any more questions on the pole placements on before we move on to vote and approve? Did you have anything to add? Yeah. Good. Okay.
Stephen went down there yesterday. We whacked the whole section by hand. And, uh, find all the original markings that we had, mass waterworks. So we should be good there. Just waiting for you guys to reach out to us when you're ready to do your, uh, uh, site.
Pending, pending approval, um, I will send a communication immediately following copying Josh to our operations team. Cause I know we were kind of in that kind of staged approach where you guys would do some of the grubbing. We could see the markings and we'd have kind of a site meeting. So pending approval, there'll be a communication this evening. I'm encouraging them to reach out to you ASAP. I will say some of the Pittsfield team. They are in New Orleans at the moment. Um, so it may be a slight delay, but supervision should be reaching out to, to at least meet in the field. So.
Thank you.
Now, the, these trees that you're removing are, are you removing the trees after you cut them down or? Cause I see they're still down Gore Road. There's a lot of stuff lying in the drainage ditches and on the edge of the road.
That may be a question. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I would say we, we, we definitely will remove them. Um, you know, I, being a wood burner, if there's any people looking for hardwood, definitely make a note. Or just let the crew know there. They can obviously leave butt logs behind, but they will follow up with a log truck, get rid of all the, the logs and everything that's left. They try to cut as much and then do their log trips at the end.
Dave, go ahead.
Yeah. Um. It's not going to happen overnight. All the laws being picked up. They got to be able to get a decent haul of trucks coming. Still it all.
No, I understand that. It's just that when, uh, EverSource went down Chester Road and cut trees back. You know, they said that they would be picked up and they took up, picked up all the ash trees and oak trees. And they left the pine. And finally, when I, when we're at a meeting, I mentioned it a couple of weeks back that, you know, they left all these huge pine trees lying on the edge of the road. And three days after I mentioned it, they picked it up. So I'm just going with what's working.
Okay. Any more questions before we make a motion?
And that was our concern too. If there's whatever it is that's down, we'd like to see it picked up. I'm getting too old, the hallway, the pine tree that people go off. And, uh, you know, it was like, you know, cleaned up.
Okay.
That's, that's our goal. Just, I agree with it. It was like, it was like trash.
Um, Dave's going to give you, he can give you his contact information. And then if you want to stay in communication, if you have any more, you know, questions about that, then you can reach out right to him too, if that's easier for you. Does that work?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm keeping my eye on it.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, okay. So we'll make a motion to, um, approve. Uh, the petition for joint or identical poll locations from N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy and Verizon New England upon the plans marked, uh, number, I almost said hashtag. Number five, zero, two, two, seventy-one, five, zero, two, three, two, one, zero, and five, five, zero, two, three, seven, four, five. Uh, is there a second? Uh, any discussion on favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Oh, thank you, Joe. Have a good night.
Thanks, Joe.
Yes, you have something for us to sign.
Yes.
Okay.
This is just for Gore Road. It's not for the other roads.
These are, this is.
Replants. Mark those three numbers.
So it's not for the North Lanford Road?
No, it, yes, it's for all three of those plant numbers.
So everything you have.
So everything I have. Okay. So I need you to sign three copies of everything.
All ready to print.
Sit by in a house. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
This is the phone.
I'm sad. Thank you.
We've got to stop coming up with stuff. I could tell Josh that too. Keep coming up with ideas.
Okay. So I need three. I have to send two and I keep the key one. So this one says.
Oh, you got to sign. Oh, great.
Yeah.
Don't hand it to me.
Why?
You guys signed it too.
Yeah, then I have.
This is your.
Yes. Thank you.
We need to elevate our music right now.
Okay, you're signing.
Do I need a black pen?
I stole all your group pens before, but it looks like they're sticking back in.
I don't like it when it doesn't have a top. It just doesn't balance right. Doesn't work for me. Now look at this one's got a top. So.
As long as you're happy.
Oh, thank you. All those maps working out. You guys. The lines.
I think I might actually sign. I don't really know what that last word says.
Yeah.
You're right. Let's see. It's left everywhere. It's an important asset.
All of them?
Oh, I got.
All right.
Okay. So are we going back in order? Do we have anyone else that needs to?
What, 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 what did we just?
You.
I want, you want to go home?
They just signed off. What they just voted on in the hearing.
Poll here. Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. I thought it was something different. Sorry.
No, so we, okay. So I would make a motion to go to six C, accept precinct map from the town clerk. Is there a second? Any session on favor? All right, Doris, what do you got for us?
All right. You have the paperwork.
Yes, I do.
Okay. I need you to vote and it's accepted key, the town of Lanford, a one, three, six town, and that's a device for different polling.
That makes sense. That would be silly. All right. Um, so I'm going to read this one here.
All right. Yeah.
Motion, you need me to read this one here?
Yeah, then you have to accept, you know, the general law of that.
So motion to approve. I don't know if that's the right word. Pursuit, motion for cert to MGL C fifty-four, section six. Uh, Lanford wishes to stay one precinct and hereby request the Secretary of the Commonwealth to prepare a single precinct map on our behalf. Is there a second? Um, any question? On favor? So I think I have the originals. Today is the seventh. I just checked there. Do you need me to initial there or just?
No, that's fine. Let me do a sign that.
And then initials here.
Yeah.
Where else would our other voting?
I know.
Place B. But I guess the transfer station. People go to the transfer station. Yeah, we should serve coffee at the transfer station. I don't know if we could eat at the transfer station. Might be on Sam's hearing to have coffee.
As clean as that transfer station is.
Clean as a whistle. Um, okay. So that's all set. Um, thank you. We're going to go.
Did Tommy sign it?
No. And then we'll pass it to you. Uh, can I go back to the start? We're good. Uh, meeting minutes. So one, um, of you need to make the motion for August ninth. Cause I was not at that meeting.
I moved to.
No, I think all of this happened.
Okay.
All right. Can you handle that?
I'll try.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't sign up for that.
Motion to approve.
To approve the minutes of August ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second. Any discussion on favor?
Hi.
He has a second, doesn't he? Just so when you can.
You can second if you weren't there.
Say second.
Second.
I'll have statements. I wasn't present. All right. So I'm going to. Okay. So you can sign there. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from August twenty-third, twenty-one as written.
So.
Um, any discussion on favor?
Hi.
No, you abstained.
I work, I work here.
TJ, you sign there. All right. We're going to smooth it right along. All right. Unfinished business. We thought, let's talk about Sperry Road again, because I feel like we haven't talked about this enough. Oh, okay. So the most recent, after our last meeting, let's, let's catch up on the Sperry Road drama. Um, after last meeting, Josh reached out to, um, R G. And we sent them the narrative from the Runions, um, as well as a copy of the deed that they had provided us. Um, as well as a copy of the deed that they had provided us. So this is the response, um. Basically, we're still where we were. Um, the data provided really doesn't give any indication of the road status. Um, there is clear reference to Sperry Road continuing to the turnpike, but it's not necessarily a town road. Uh, the data provided first review is limited, so. Uh, his best guess would be that Sperry Road originally went all the way to Warren Oak Road and when the turnpike came through, it essentially cut the road off. Resolving this issue would require research with respect to the limits of Sperry Road when it was originally established, what part of it was taken when the turnpike came through. And were there any additional abandonments or discontinuances since then? So, um. What he's basically saying is that, um, he's guessing again that it's most likely Sperry Road was intended to remain all the way to the turnpike. However, it's difficult to ignore the course of events referred to in the Run You narrative. Um, and he's suggesting that everything be left as is on the maps until proper research is done to confirm the status of the road. Yes?
Back in two thousand seventeen, I researched that with four of the assessors and sent a letter to Lori Voucher.
Okay.
With a link to all the deeds and all the maps, the turnpike setup when it became true.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I can't find it on my computer, so I looked up the computer.
Okay.
They should have it in the assessment. It was an email with links to all the maps and all the land takings. It was a thousand page document.
I'd rather read the whole in peace.
Sperry Road is on there. Okay, sorry, but you're like right behind the projector for me. I apologize.
Um, when I first started here in two thousand and five.
Yeah.
Pete Ackley was the superintendent at the time. And I was a worker and taking, I just create that all the way out to the end out there.
Really?
And until Mr. Runyon, who had the tower put up.
Yo.
Said, well, you know, I got the tower up. I'll just plow through the tower. There's no sense in guys going out. That was the older gentleman.
Yes.
Who did that. And, uh, so we, basically at that time, Pete decided that it was time that we just turn around and turn around because it's easier.
Okay.
And it was, I guess, some, I guess, the same, somebody owned that little property back there and wasn't doing anything with it. There's another property all the way.
Yeah, someone has purchased it and he wants to just, uh, mill. So he wants to access.
That was back then, so.
Yeah.
Basically, we just stopped. Like turnaround at that point on. We got a relief.
So you're thinking that there wasn't ever like a actual vote or anything to end the road? It was more just like a discussion?
I could never find anything when I, when I talked to Mary several times. Uh, we couldn't find anything where there was a vote. The only vote we could find was where they changed the curve. Right there, it was, it used to go straight and come over to, uh. Russell Stage.
Yeah.
It used to go straight through that corner right there.
Went down.
Down, yes, exactly. You, you're, you're, exactly.
Okay.
And they, they changed it there. That was the only thing we could find.
Okay. Um, okay, so Josh and I were talking about asking attorneys, but if Dick already did all the work. Can we do a search for that email?
If it's a thousand.
Links. Well, yeah, but you can. We got a list there for Sperry Road in the document, and it brings up just those maps.
Okay. Do we wanna take a look for that and then?
What email did you send it to?
I sent it to four of the assessors. Uh, Lori Voucher was the assessor of, uh, assessors' party at the time. And I sent it to her. I had the original email. She replied to it. But the attachment's not in the reply. I can't find the original message by sent to her.
Yeah. So if you can send.
That reply?
I have reply.
Oh, for that.
Yeah, that'll help with this. Um, okay, so let's, let's see what we can find there before we go. I just hate to spend the money on the attorney fees. What do you guys think?
Oh, I sent, if, if it's there, we gotta find it. I'm not, I'm not, I don't feel we have to go forward and quickly find out what's actually there.
And then what's gonna happen is the discussion is gonna turn back to us. For us to say, do we wanna put money into a road that no one lives on?
Well. When you stop and think about it. What we would be doing is repairing a road so someone can make a bunch of money on it.
Yeah.
And he'll probably make more money than what we spent to repair the road. And then, when he's done, what's the road gonna look like? So.
That's where your, that's where your road bond goes.
Yeah, right. But.
Yeah.
You got a triaxles, you got triaxles running up and down the road all day long anyways, because one of the guys that lived on there hauls. That road right now, I'll tell you, is cupping as it keeps. In, in the last year and a half, you should, it's, you can see it cupping. Just from him hauling back and forth.
Really?
And that's just, that's just like two to four trips a day.
What's your haul?
He's, um, tangled with, he's tangled with, uh.
What, he hauling logs or?
Dirt.
He hauling dirt?
Dirt to his place, you know, just running that truck up and down that street. Cause it's only, what is it? Brad, it's what's tarred gravel or something? Uh, yes, it's only, uh. Two layers of tar and gravel mean nothing to it. It's just.
Yeah, cause I've driven a thick way. Getting decent material down on that bus. But, uh, maybe he should be sent a letter about the road line. He's working it not much.
Uh, ju- just him going in and out of that equipment is enough to just.
Yeah.
So he's working from the, is he actually doing work or he's just going home?
That's, that's, he, he brings his, his truck home every day. Going up and down that street every day.
Well, if he brings an empty truck home, if he brings a empty truck home, I can't see any problem there, but if he is. Hauling material of any kind. In and out of there, now we've got to talk to him about a road line.
Well, he also, there's one of them down there. I don't know if it's the same one. They run firewood out of there that you, uh, I mean. There's about fifty-fifty running, running empty, running full.
Okay, um, so as far as the end of the road goes, we're gonna wait again. Uh, cause we can't make a decision tonight. So let's take a look at, see if we can find those emails. And then let's talk about it again in two weeks. I, I look forward to that. Um, okay, next up, we have, ooh, question, sorry.
Forgot some paperwork.
Oh, joy.
I knew I was missing one.
Aha, I thought that it didn't feel like I signed enough stuff.
You did. Is that the right one?
Uh, we surfed that blank, blank, Ever Source.
Since he doesn't have a signature.
It says city clerk. That, that's you, that's you.
Right, but that's all I thought. So I don't know where you guys are supposed to sign on this one.
You want us to sign the bottom?
Yeah, cause I don't see where it says.
Okay, here you sign under there.
Oh, Tommy, that one.
Sorry.
Not sorry. Alright, we're gonna go to George Muller Road Culver update. This is another fun subject, but I, I hear we have Headway.
Yes, we do.
Alright.
That's about it. I says, go ahead and turn call the paper right. Also, I also point in was, uh, we ditched. Up past, to the center to the corral and move far as fast back. Make it, make sure that everything does go where it belongs.
Okay. So, and then we're ready to put the road culver in?
The, uh, driveway culver, catch basin and.
Great. And how, how does the road look as far as, um, washout? I'm assuming.
Really bad.
Okay.
Since he covered that one, uh, corral.
Okay.
Other than that.
Great.
He could start a shale and clothing nut riding ring right now.
There you go. Couple extra bucks.
Boy, I tell you, there's a lot of water.
So do you need us to keep this on the agenda or do you feel like we can move on from this? Oh, look at that, it's so exciting. Alright, we're gonna take that off. Alright, thank you. Um, next up, we've got the ARPA project rollout plan.
Making a host here, Kara?
Yes, I can.
Turn my screen. Alright. So here it is. It's not live yet, but this is, uh, what it would ultimately look like. The last time we met, we talked about. I shared you a printout, right, of what we would like to put on the website, and then there'll be a link of which where you folks will be able to select and then. Complete some sort of electronic form, uh, to suggest a project of which might be an eligible, may, may be an eligible expense under the ARPA. So here, um, you'll see our town website talks a little bit about, um, ARPA. How much the town is getting, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um. I moved up, Kara, you're suggesting at the last meeting that we put the plans up higher instead of down below.
Okay.
Um, and just kind of letting folks know that if. Uh, project suggestions can be aligned with the town's resilient master plan, open space and recreation plan. And our local rapid recovery plan, which is not available yet. That's why it's in parentheses there, coming soon. Um, if, if project suggestions can be aligned to that, of which we're at that point, might be, uh. Prioritize a little better. And the only reason why we're doing that is because we don't know how much we're gonna, how much, uh. The dollar amount is gonna be of requests. It can be. As low as whatever, but as much as one point three million, let's say, or two million dollars worth of requests. And we're only getting three hundred and sixty thousand plus. At that point, you can then, um, you know, better prioritize which projects, uh, you know, you can move forward with. Um, I've also thought about maybe. You know, and we could talk more, uh, about that when we get there, but maybe even creating a sheet with columns. And maybe the board can get the first round of recommendations and kick it to finance committee and let finance committee review it.
Okay.
Make a round of recommendations, you know, kind of just to keep the process.
Sure.
You know, open and transparent and, and, and. Um, keep it, finance committee being the legislative branch of the town, right, representing the town's people in town's meetings, the left board, just to keep that balance.
Sure.
Um. But as you scroll down, you'll see eligible use of funding, kind of these subcategories. It's very vague. There's links here, fact sheet and quick reference guide that goes more into detail about each of those subcategories and. I'm warning everybody right now, the more you're reading to it, the more vague it gets. Um, but nevertheless, it'll give you some sort of an idea of what type of eligible projects can be funded. So when you click on this link here. It'll take you to, um, or it should take you.
Theoretically.
To this page, and this is the electronic form. Very simple, name. Company, organization, if, if there is one. Address, or maybe it's just a resident, um, email. You'll select the, the category.
Yeah.
The estimated cost. Title of the project and a brief description.
Great.
Um. So.
Now it'll go to you.
It'll get emailed. I gotta confirm that, but it should be emailed to me. If not me, it'll be Wendy, the webmaster, which is forwarded to me. Um. And so, you know, we're thinking that, and we've purposely titled it project suggestion and not just, uh, applying for funds. Because it is managed and controlled in the direction of select board and. We want folks to think that there's so many grants and that you're denying their requests. Rather, it's a suggestion. Um, uh, to keep it in, in. And, you know, good spirit there.
Okay.
Uh, but nevertheless, you know, I, I figured once we receive these, we can kind of vet them through, you know, even further research if. The suggestion is indeed eligible or not. Those that are not, that we find that are not, we can just back them out. And, and continue the process that way. Um. So that's, yeah, that's what I have here. Um. As far as the process is concerned, if you tell me. Yeah, let's move forward. I can get this.
Looks great. Yeah. Load it up.
And so I don't know, you know, I don't know how much of a deadline you wanna give to folks. Remember, it's gonna be. Departments, community residents, organizations and businesses. We can leave it out for two weeks, three weeks, one month deadline. Um, we do have four years. Despite this, we don't have to, and mind you, we only got. Our first portion, I think sixty thousand or so under our own control right now.
Okay.
So it's not, you know, it's not like. You have to commit all of it and spend all the money by the end of the calendar year. Cause we, we don't have all of it yet.
Are we gonna be advertising that this is?
Yeah.
Five.
So maybe we can even have a. Yeah, it's a good point. So we can target start date of next week, Monday, give some time to.
I'm fine with like a month or even longer as.
Yeah, I mean, also because the fact that we've got four years. That good, let's give the people ample time to. You know, drive their memory now and then, but give them ample time to come up with some good ideas.
I think that, you know, the four-year docs, remember, some communities are getting eighty million, forty million, hundred plus millions, so. You know, there's a lot of, lot involved with that level of project, right, like design phases, construction phase, and, you know. Meetings and, you know, with department heads and boards and committees and. That's a, you know, a lot of projects to vet through, but for a community like Lanford, we probably. Go through all of this in less than a year easily.
Yeah.
Depending on what you get for requests, so. I mean, I figure the first go around, we can call it the first go around.
Yep.
Where we solicit project, um, suggestions. We review them, and at that point, you can. Maybe commit half this year to certain projects depending on level of priority, because I'm sure, I can tell you right now. There's some project suggestions that are immediate need.
Yeah.
Versus others that are not necessarily an immediate need, but good for the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I mean, I guess we can wait until. Those requests come in, and at that point, you can determine. How you wanna divide it from there.
Okay.
Now, this doesn't, uh. Go like you gotta extend what you got before you get the next. Uh, allotment of money. Like with.
No, no, no.
Like a green community, you had to extend that, be ready, you could qualify for more.
Yeah, no, there's no rules like that.
No, no, okay.
Um, and so, you know, we'll put this out there. Certainly. Folks can submit more, more, more than one project suggestion. You're not limited to. Just submitting one for folks out there that are listening. Um, uh, but just nevertheless, it's up to the select board to decide ultimately.
Okay.
How many you wanna fund, what you wanna prioritize. Um. So that's where we're at. And yeah, if you give me the green light, we'll proceed forward.
Yeah, that looks great. Thank you. That's good. Alright, um, next up, we've got the all department expense report. We should be at twenty-five percent. July, August, September, a little under twenty-five percent from now through September. Um, let's see. It's pretty good. I'm not seeing anything. Highway overtime salary is at thirty-eight percent. Dave, just so you know.
Yes, um, I should be able to recruit part of that. If we are able to go with, uh, the theme.
Okay. The rest of highway looks good. Board of Health stipends at thirty-nine percent, which is weird, cause, cause Board of Health, shouldn't that be like, if it's a stipend, it's like a.
You're right. Yeah.
So that shouldn't be that high.
Um, I'll let them know.
Over. Water department looks good. Oh, yeah, you're about to ask us for a whole bunch of money, aren't you? Right, I don't see anything. Do you guys see anything that you're concerned about?
No, I think we're doing quite well. Considering the circumstances.
Yeah.
The water department has had their share of troubles. With the weather, the highway has had its share. The police department's got rained on big time. And we just gotta face it.
Yeah. Yeah, looking good. Alright, next up, I have police department funding requests. Welcome aboard, I'm gonna pull up that email.
I'm assuming you all they come up there.
Sure.
Absolutely.
You. Thank you for coming and waiting.
Gives me a chance to see what goes on, I don't get to attend any of these.
Oh, they're so exciting.
They are.
We'll talk about Sherry Rhodes, yeah, feel free to come back.
I think I'm tied up that day.
Um.
Yeah, I'll, um. Unless you want to just read out the email.
So, um, yeah, so, uh, the report I got from Josh, uh, was from the TA of Chester, um, when you meant to go over the police department needs.
Yes.
Um, so what's, that's for you, Josh. Uh, so the current budget, uh, for FY twenty-two was supposed to offer the fifteen hours a week per town for patrol coverage, however, there were some unanticipated needs, which, uh, four thousand four hundred for the training, for, I'm sorry, for Bridge Academy.
Correct.
Um, because of a change in the law. Four thousand eight hundred for firearm training for five officers, um, and eight eighty for officers, so that total is the nine thousand two hundred. And then the other part of the discussion was the increase in, um, patrol time hours for chief. Um. Because you're looking to provide thirty hours. Is that correct?
No, so would she, what, um? Alright, so let me just, so without any transfer, so there's that nine thousand two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Those trains or those one-time calls, so with without any transfers, if we do nothing by January, it's anticipated. These are projections, that coverage can potentially decrease to seven hours per week, uh, per town.
Um. Because we wouldn't have the funding.
Right, so if we if we fund gap, uh, these costs, um, then at that point we, um, can maintain our uh, fifteen hours per week projected.
Got it, okay.
Uh, additionally, there were, yeah, right, so there were other unanticipated costs, there was a, uh, uh, a vehicle note.
Oh, sorry, yeah, okay.
The final note for the twenty fifteen.
Eighteen.
Twenty eighteen vehicle, that was totaling thirteen thousand, six thousand five hundred per town, um, which was paid out of the expense.
Okay.
And so we can either A, put it back, or B, look at it, and if it looks like the expense budget is, you know, there's a gap there, then we can make moves at that point. Um. There is a a request, um, to increase the annual, uh, coverage to be thirty hours of patrol patrol time per week, per town. And that increase.
From the fifteen.
Right, from the fifteen.
Okay.
Uh, that increase, it, the chief, I think it was looking about forty-two thousand dollar increase, which would be twenty-one thousand, uh, per town. Um. And so that's, that's where we are.
Okay.
Right?
No, I don't put this up.
I'm looking at your, um, oh no, that's fire, hold on, police expenses, oh, okay.
Well, we, we, yeah, we cut a we cut a check to Chester.
Oh, that's why it's at ninety-one percent, okay.
Right.
I was like, whoa, okay.
Yeah.
Everything gets paid out of Chester.
Yeah.
Okay.
There was, if I remember right, you said there was something in the original budget that was cut out by the former chief. Why was this done?
So, the former chief had submitted the budget for this fiscal year prior to me taking over on February first. Um, several times I had asked him to go over the budget with me, because I had no experience with the budget. Um, that never happened, and then, six days after I was sworn in, that Saturday, I had my first budget meeting with Chester, um, finance and I, and he told me that he would be there. Two hours fire, he texted me, said, I'm sorry, I have something unforeseen, he wasn't there, so I did my best to fumble through it, what was taken out.
Right, the the point that I'm trying to come to through all this is apparently that was money that you was needed.
So he zeroed out the training budget line item from twenty-one to twenty-two, which had about four thousand to my recollection, and I can look that up, because about four thousand, and he zeroed that um, in this, in FY twenty-two budget.
Okay.
Um, so I had added that back in. Again, not knowing what I was going to need, but I knew I was gonna need that training money, but he had zeroed that out.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, I I think that we need the police coverage. I saw this coming, as as much as, uh, Selma, Bulbas, Arrow did. And he and I agree on it, that we should be, maybe we can't give her all she's asking for, but we should be putting some money into the police department. I am a hundred percent for that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so.
Sure.
Yes, was our question.
So to your question, Tom, about the, so the salary line item didn't get reduced, um, I think the salary line item for all officers were level funded, except that because the chief now is full-time, she absorbs the majority of that cost, so that means less hours now available for the other officers. So, nothing was cut for officer time, it was as terms of hours.
Yeah.
Nothing was cut for officers.
But there's, there's a lot of money, a lot of unforeseen expenditures in here.
Yeah, so the.
That's not, that's not entirely her fault, the finance committee, you're selecting.
So you, yeah, to your point, that nine thousand two hundred, we budgeted for that, I, we just kicked the finance committee and they can review that and supplement it, um, the nine thousand two hundred dollars.
And now we are just doing half of that nine thousand two hundred, is that right, or is that the full?
No, that's our portion.
My portion.
My understanding that's.
Oh, sorry.
Half. Because it was about ten thousand.
Yeah.
And training, roughly, that number was about ten thousand for the Bridge Academy.
Okay.
And the additional firearms, it was total ten, so it's about five.
So nine thousand two hundred by by.
Yeah, so whatever that number is.
So, okay, so, um, so our move on that one, I don't know if you need a motion for us, would be to kick into finance.
I would kick it to finance for them to review and provide a recommendation, they might, you know, that can be, that's what reserve, uh, is for, for those unanticipated things.
Okay.
Um.
Absolutely.
And let them chew on it and.
And then they'll come back to us with some recommendations about where we can get it and and fill those line items in. Um, as far as the, um, unforeseen cost for the note, I don't mind letting it sit for now, and then we can address it if it becomes an issue, does that sound okay with you guys?
I don't know how the, if I may.
Yes.
I don't know how the agreement works, I know Chester is, I know, giving me their half, just call it sixty-five hundred.
Okay.
Um, my understanding after the meeting last Monday was that they were intending on giving me that.
And putting it back into your expense account.
Okay, now that being said, that was my understanding, I haven't gotten anything formally from them, I'm just putting that out there.
So we would have to reach out, so, I think, so we haven't really come across this.
Right.
Yet, but my understanding would be if Chester is gonna put in their half now, then we would probably have to match that.
That would be true.
So, we can reach out to Chester and see exactly what their plans are for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And then we'll, we'll readdress that, figure out.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, so I would imagine we would have to keep it.
Do we, do we have anybody going to the Bridge Academy yet?
This year, we have one.
One.
Yeah, officer Grislock will be going to that. Um, what I have just quickly on the Bridge Academy, the latest, is they're hoping to start on around October first. Um, and then he, it's gonna be on his schedule when it's, he's available. Um, so. Yeah, so he has to be completely done with the two hundred hours by June thirtieth, twenty-two. So, right now, we have one officer.
Okay.
So with that, with that transfer, that'll maintain the existing fifteen hours per week per town? Or patrol coverage, right?
Roughly, unless, you know, something unforeseen happens, um, if we have any more major emergencies with the weather or investigations, what have you.
Okay.
But that's roughly, yes.
So that's sort of the first half of, um, what we want to discuss today, and then the second half is the increase in hours that you're looking for.
Right.
Correct.
And and to clarify too, that's forty-two would be for the year, I think that, like, let's say we start January one, it wouldn't be forty-two, it'd be.
Half that.
Half that, then half that per town.
Correct.
Um.
So it'd be about what, ten thousand, eleven thousand a town.
Right, remember, because we're in the middle of the fiscal, we're about to be in the middle of fiscal year. So forty-two thousand dollar increase in the overall annual budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for coverage from, you know, July one to June thirty. But if we support this, then it wouldn't be forty-two for this fiscal year.
I know, okay, because we're.
Right.
Um, so I guess my, my initial thought when looking at this is that, um, during the middle of the year, we typically can't make too much adjustment in such a major, you know, line item. Um. The other, you know, the other other items, it makes sense to me, you know, unforeseen, to go forward with finding, you know, money and wherever to to help, you know, cover that cost. But this is a tough one, because you know, I, something like this, to me, I feel like should go to the floor with budget, you know, and then it'll allow the townspeople to look at it and vote on it. Um. But like Tom says, I don't disagree with the increase in hours. Um, and that it's necessary, I'm just not sure that I would be comfortable, I mean, I'd have to talk to finance and see like what they, what they would recommend. Um, but making such an adjustment sort of in the middle of the fiscal year.
Right.
Um. But I wasn't a part of Chester either, so I don't know exactly what their opinion was on that, but what are your thoughts, guys?
I think we just we're into the, uh, finance committee and see what they say.
Okay, has finance talked about this at all, or?
No, not yet, I just figured.
Start here first.
Start here first, and then you guys can vote to move it to the finance committee, then we'll.
Now, what was, what was Chester's sort of, um, overall decision there?
But it was, it was similar, they were gonna bring it to finance.
Okay.
To see, you know, how we could do it, they had also suggested a, um, an assistant to help me, because I was very honest with them and told them that. I I was told last Monday night that this position was put into place with the idea that I was gonna be able to patrol twenty hours Chester, twenty hours Lanford. And, um, honestly, that's not happening.
Yeah.
I'm lucky if I get out an hour or two a week.
Yeah.
Um, because of everything that is needed, so they had said, well, how about if we, um, get an assistant for you this, this year, instead of waiting, we had spoken a meeting, um, about getting one, starting next July.
Yeah.
They're talking about using monies, um, Josh, uh, Jason was gonna look into the ARPA money to see if there was any way they could enable.
Good idea.
Getting an assistant this year and ask if that would free up time for me during the day.
Okay.
And I said, potentially, yes, it would, it would free up time, but I would still be asking for the same monies for my patrol officers, because I still need to get my officers out on the street.
Yeah.
Um, so that's kind of where we were, is there wasn't a lot of talk, other than we'll go to the finance committee about the extra patrol money. And then they're also gonna look into possibly having an assistant and where, if and when, where they could get that money, either from the ARPA or somewhere else, so it was kind of vague, um, but they had some things to look into.
I like that idea, though, I mean, I think that the position is still very much a growing position, you know, I mean, it's only a few years old, we're still figuring out how many hours we need. And, you know, what works and what doesn't work for us, so.
Right.
Um, it definitely sounds like we need to take a look at, at that and bring you up a little bit more.
Right.
Um, and then being able to plead that case on the town floor when it comes to voting for the budget, but I do like the idea of the assistant, that's helpful.
Absolutely, and also, um, in the infant stages of trying to get, um, do an internship with Westfield State.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I've started that with help of a friend of mine, and then now I've just got to look at candidates and have a little fly, so I'm hoping, um, if not this semester, next semester, to have an intern either as well, or.
That's great.
Um, to, you know, to free up some more time and have them help me, so.
I think, um, Chief Mader might work with, does he work with interns from Westfield State, I don't know if it's such so much interns, but it's more like people coming up and being part of the fire, so I don't know if he has any like advice or.
Yeah.
But I know in the past, they have drawn a lot of people up here that are in EMS or whatever, that are interested.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a great idea, like that. Um, do you have any other thoughts, or?
No, I guess I've. Sure. But, uh, I think you're, I think you're working very hard at this.
Yeah.
And, uh, I do believe that with the the stuff that come down on you, like a, the storms that he's had and whatever, totally unexpected. I think we should be doing something to put money back in there for.
Yeah, absolutely, and I really appreciate, um, the way that the report is written and the research that you did, it's easy to understand and, you know, see what, what you need and where it's coming from.
I'll ask around about the ARPA too, because one of it, because I know that was suggested. And I'm still curious to know whether or not we can use ARPA, because if we can, then great, you know, you can go through the process that I, that I presented earlier on. And that will cover hours between now and June thirty, but not necessarily.
Ooh, yeah.
That it will be fully funded in the next fiscal year as it, as you guys go through your own normal budget process. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm also wondering too, though, if Lanford can deal with it, I mean, Chester can, so I don't make numbers easy, let's say we're gonna pay out ten thousand for the remaining fiscal year, then.
That's what I mean.
I'm wondering if it's five and five.
What I'd like is, because, I gotta, I guess I gotta start calling some people, so, first responders, police, fire.
Yeah.
You know. Is that an eligible expense under our, you know what I mean?
Or, or even using ARPA for some of the other stuff that we needed, the, um, the courses, the unforeseen, you know, any of those things too, I don't know.
Right.
If you want to.
Thanks to, thanks to two one.
Okay, so our next step then is to, um, send this information to finance and ask what their, um.
Yeah, I would, I mean, if, you know, obviously, the direction of the board, kick it to finance committee and allow them to review it, discuss it.
Okay, and then put it back on our agenda. Yes, question.
Um, there you go, you're a citizen, but now you're bringing in finance, how could that much money be unanticipated?
So the unanticipated was the, um, the first amount, hold on, let me get the break. The unanticipated was the four thousand four hundred for the Bridge Academy?
No, I'm sorry, I'm more concerned about the thirteen thousand.
The note.
The note.
The note.
The note become.
So that's a good question, um.
If I, if I.
Please, yes.
So when I, um, took over as chief in February, the former chief had explained, I can't see you.
Yeah, yeah.
The former chief had explained to me that in coming this December, we were gonna have our last payment for our new cruiser, our two thousand twenty cruiser, roughly twenty-eight thousand. Um, at no time was I told that we had a final payment on our two thousand eighteen cruiser, of the thirteen thousand, so we had budgeted roughly thirty thousand for that, the newer cruiser.
Yeah.
I had no knowledge, and I reached out to Ford Motor Company to say, is this accurate, because the way the chief had explained to me is that you always have a cruiser payment, but only one. And then the next year you have one, so I was surprised, and the town administrator in, um, Chester was as well, so I actually reached out, and that is not an error.
Yeah.
That was our final payment for the two thousand eighteen cruiser, so I was never made aware of it, I look back at all my notes and I look back at everything that I have been given, and I had no knowledge of that.
Thank you, that makes sense, and.
They got lost in transition.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Okay, perfect, so that'll be on your agenda next time you guys meet, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Have you been down Oldish Road lately?
I was last week.
Where they, they're putting that road in for the marijuana.
Last week.
I've had several complaints about that, about, uh, people in the road, vehicles in the road.
Okay.
Uh, maybe we're gonna have to require them to have a police officer there.
So they have been requesting when they're moving in large equipment, um, and I was in contact just today, and he told me that there's a big signboard up now. Um, I haven't had a chance to run down there today, but I'm being told at the top of twenty-three that there's a signboard, um, up telling people that to slow down. Um, but as far as people working in the road without an officer being in the road, I'm not aware of that, because I have had several details requested and filled for them. So. Okay, but I.
I just don't want to see anybody get hurt.
No, absolutely, yeah, that's a tough corner, I will reach out to them and make sure that if they're gonna be in the road for any length of time or have vehicles in the road, that they are reaching out for detail. So.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, did you have a question?
Yeah, um. Now that we're.
I'm really surprised that they would be allowed to put it. It'd be nice to have more presence of either local or state on that road. To make the traffic a lot slower than it is. Where, where my men park across the street, right there, twenty five mile an hour on the sign. And I know it's everybody from this state, every other state, flying through. Great to have some sort of presence to be slowing down.
Yeah, I do have a standing order with my officers when they're in Blanford to be on twenty three. And to drive, especially Friday afternoons and Sunday afternoons, particularly to be there for sure. Um, but I will put that out again, but they know to be on twenty three quite a bit, and that's where I think they spend the majority of their Blanford time is. On twenty three, so we're doing the best we can, but I, I completely understand.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
All right, so what do we have next, we skipped around so much, all right, um, Water Department, welcome, come on up. G A C replacement at the Water Department.
Yeah, so there's our situation with this. It's basically, you know, we have a consent order to do carbon filter filtration replacement. We had around, we have, we have like thirteen thousand every year, and we've basically been using it for filters, we don't have to do it till today, share, man, oh great, we'll just. Use that to do the carbon. Carbon costs, costs quite a bit more than sand filtration replacement. Fifty seven thousand dollars. Compared to thirteen thousand dollars. So. Um, but that'll do the finishers and the roughs, so there's roughly like twelve, twelve altogether, there's four. Four finishers, eight roughs. They all gotta be, and they all gotta be done, because they're all, they're all spent. We're gonna design a program basically after this, to basically when we do that filter, so we figure by the time we get back on a filter two. We'll start doing the G A C, by then we won't have this problem. The problem is, we have the money in capital expense that got moved, but that money has been allocated for SCADA. We use that money for this project, we don't have enough to pay for SCADA. So we're gonna apply for the ARPA money. But we don't, you know, you're not up and running with that yet. It's a time issue thing. So what we're looking to do is basically, we can pay for that out of. Our capital. But we need to get basically at that point, that funding from the ARPA to help replace it, because we just, we don't have it.
How much do you anticipate this costing?
Fifty seven thousand dollars, we already got the bill, it's fifty six and change, so just say fifty seven. That's, that's the removal, see, the tricky thing about G A C too, is they just don't dispose of it, what they do is. When they take it out, they put it back in the bag, and they put it right back on the truck, and they ship it back to a factory, and what they do is they, they um. They overhaul, they re-burn it, and then reprocess it, they, they don't throw it away. The other thing too, is we, um. The report we just had done by Wright and Pierce, where they checked our whole system from beginning to end, and then we did like twelve weeks of sampling. Holliston wanted, not Holliston. So uh, they wanted a report, so they can compare what we have for G A C. In comparison to what we're running for like water quality and water, you know, organics, everything like that. And it came out that it's a little different, and he believes the stuff that we got originally was a lower quality, it's like. Burnt coconut shell. So it's anthracite, but it's an inferior product. We're gonna be going with a better American-made quality product, that should last longer, should perform better. We have two batches of it, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna basically mix a little bit of it in, we'll have a better product.
So how often do you anticipate needing the fifty seven thousand?
No, no, this is the one time thing, so what we're gonna do is. So we, we do filter one, two, three, four, next year, we would be changing out filter four again. Then we have a year off. Yeah.
As opposed to the fifty seven.
Right, so what we have to do is we have to budget into that, and when he's up there, we're gonna say, okay, how much is it to do? Three of them, two finishers, not one finisher and two roughs, so that when we get down to filter two. Not only do, do we do the sand, but we also do the G A C at the same time, that way when that filter goes online. It's good to go, because remember, I don't want anything older than seven years old, because we figured the G A C is gonna last anywhere from six to ten, eleven years. And then it's, and then it's shot, so if we just budget into it to have it taken care of and done right off the bat, it'll be cheaper. We're not gonna have these water quality problems like we did before, and we should be pretty, pretty good to go.
Tell me something, after you do all four of them, like, like you wanna do. How soon could you start a program of doing number one, number two?
When we get to filter two, so next year, we're gonna do filter three, then filter, I mean, filter four, filter three, filter two. When we get to either two or three, we'll send them out to be tested, and if they're starting to decline, then we'll do it on filter three instead of filter two. But if it's looking pretty good, we'll, we'll change it when we get to filter two.
Right, because then you can save quite a bit of money over time. Only having to do one or two a year instead of a whole.
I wanna do one every other year. And I wanna do one entire filter every year, by doing that, I'll have one entirely new filter. So when I go to change it, my newest filter will be one year old, my oldest will be seven, and I'll never have a filter older than seven years old. Whereas when we had our problem, our oldest filter was fifteen years old.
Yeah, that shot, that system over here is thrived on neglect for too long.
Oh, yeah, well. Now, we also have, so the money we got this year, so if we can get that money from the ARPA. That thirteen, we also have another, a little creeper, I'm just gonna fill them in, not that we need it, but. A little problem that came up, now the, the main transition line hasn't been, when I talked to Mark Boozman and Brad, and we figured. Twelve to fifteen years, it hasn't been mowed or maintained. So Mark went out the other day and he looked at it, um, and it's about twelve eighteen hundred a day. We have like large trees across down in the water lines, um, we have sandbars that are all corroded and washed away. The whole line needs to be repaired. So. We need to get him in there basically, just to get it up to the point where it's accessible, but the good note, I have a plan to help maintain that.
That's not a fun place to work.
No, no, so we also get in that the E T V from the old fire department, so next year, I wanna purchase, here's your D R mower, you pull, you pull behind it. Raise it up nice and high, and I, we're gonna have Stephen just run that line a couple times a year, hopefully we won't ever have this problem again. Maybe some large scale maintenance items, that's about it. What he's also gonna do too, is he's got, we're gonna also have him fix out the banks on the road. Not the road, because that's another chapter ninety issue, you gotta type, you know. Um, but we're gonna have him fix the road banks, um, because over the years, you know, plows, you know, have gone off the road a little bit, you know, this and that. It's kind of rutted, and it's, it just needs to be freshened up and cleaned up. And uh, we're gonna mow those down, push everything back a little bit, so it's nice and fresh and same thing. Because right now, it's so bad, we can barely, we make one, one moment pass up and down that road, and the rest of it's just, it's in rough shape. But again, it's been ten to fifteen years since it's been touched.
Joan, did you have a question?
Yes, please, I would like to know what G A C stands for.
Granular activated carbon.
Duh.
What it does is it takes out, now you know how we keep having these problems with THMs and H A As, which are disinfection by products? They're created by. Yeah, yeah, that's the cheap stuff, so the G A C takes out the organics, it helps to take the organics out of the water. Therefore, we'll have less disinfection by product, therefore.
Is that wrong? I always call those, no, in my head.
All these, these projects and that. Being a non-town water user, okay, uh. I'm looking at, all right, how much money of town tax money? Is gonna have to go into this to bring all this. You remember, if you're gonna distribute it among.
I was just waiting to jump in, but. Well, so, so there's a, a combination of, so obviously, we've had multiple discussions on this, and maybe who I am. Constantly figure out the best. So.
Check with your name on it going to your campaign, so.
All right, um, so. So we know that ARPA funds is in the pipeline, we have that it's real, it funds. Out of everything that's big, I know for sure it funds anything that's, oh, oh, it funds a water department related needs, and it funds broadband related. There's also infrastructure funds. And this has been a frustrating thing for me, on, on my end, to learn how much Blanford's gonna get. This, once I know at that point, we can redirect infrastructure related. Uh, items away from ARPA to this funding pipeline that comes with the federal government, which will free up more ARPA money for other projects. Because ARPA, you can also use it for drainage issues as well, and we do have some drainage problems as well. So, but this is an immediate need, so this, this is a, the, the, not the.
We have a consent order on this.
There's, there's the G A C, but what's the other one you were just talking about? The one that we were just talking about with mowing.
Oh, the, the pipeline?
Pipeline problem.
Yeah, access. Issues with that too, we wanna talk about emergency, Mark was down there, and you know, there's a brook that goes over our water line. He says that is something, going back to cloverts. That should technically be culverted, he's like, because of all the influx and all this rain and all that, everything else, it's getting deeper. Eventually, if we don't take care of that now, it will eventually erode down to that water line. That brook will just keep, it'll keep going because of where it is, and he says, you, you can already see where that was at one point. And where it is now.
So as far as um, uh, order of priority in, in funding, um, I thought that the best idea would be. That because there's an immediate, there, they do have a capital line of expense with funding there, except that. You know, a large portion of it was dedicated, dedicated to SCADA project, and we, we fund it. So instead, you know, if they're gonna spend this fifty seven thousand, we just gotta be sure that we carve out fifty seven thousand. For SCADA projects, put that money back so that it's there. Capital project, but the, the greater plan was to commit it to the SCADA project, uh, so that gives them that flexibility to. Execute now and take care of that need, we just gotta be sure that we. Commit uh, funding from somewhere, and I was recommending ARPA, um, it can be, we have a hundred, you know, we have a hundred thousand to dispose in our capital.
We can send it to finance, see what they recommend.
Send it to finance, see what they recommend.
Yeah, because.
The resources that there's, just a matter of how you wanna proceed forward with.
So um, crazy thing, I was thinking in line with TJ. Happens once in a blue moon, um, in terms of, um, I understand where he's coming from with taxpayer dollars. I know it's always an issue with water, um, but the way that I feel like I balance that out is thinking about the emergency requirement for water. With the fire department, and I feel like we've talked a lot about the possible emergency tax, whatever, so I think that. I get, I totally get where you're coming in, I wish I could think of people that are non-water users and sort of how we balance that out, but. Um, because of the need for it for a whole town, I feel like I'm able to say like, that. Kicking it to finance and looking, is there anything in our capital or something that we can use for a project like this, like I feel comfortable with that personally, but. I'm a water user, so.
Which throws a bigger, a bigger, you know, time crunch on it, and I've already had to book the day to have it done, because it has to be done, because. It has to be done, like, like this, by the second week in October, you, you, we can't do anything like that over anymore. Whether it gets too cold, um, I don't know, Chief Mother, got ahold of you yet, I, I told him about it, we're gonna need a fire truck the week of the twenty seventh. But it's, once he starts getting too cold, you can't, you can't sit there and start running water.
Okay, so as soon as finance meets and they decide what, you know, what they're gonna recommend to us, we can bring it back. To select for to make that final.
Yeah, so again, it's just deciding what.
I have to get it done no matter what. I have no choice.
It doesn't stop you not getting it done. Gotta make a decision.
So I think that, because it's like Josh is saying, that you'll use the money that you have carved out for SCADA. And then we're just gonna look at how we can refund that with.
Okay.
Joan?
As a resident, I have a wealth, I get clean water, taxpayer money or not, um, people who. Get town water, they deserve their water to be as clean as mine, no matter what.
The other, to add to that, we have a major fire here in a sour town.
You're done.
Yeah, we're gonna drain that groundwater well.
Yeah, you'll drain it probably. Twenty minutes, half hour, forty five minutes? Well, the other thing too, you've been in the meetings, we've been, I mean, it's, and it's not like we're just looking at this, I mean, we're looking at. A lot, I mean, and the thing is, we still need some of our free cash and stuff like that, because we're looking at a lot of grants to come in. But a lot of, you know, grants and basically um, loans, everything else like that. To help fund this and to help with the distribution, um, there's, I think there's what, three of them we talked about, Josh? We have what, three different pro, pro, loans and grants and stuff like that, the last time I remember, right, it's yours.
Yeah, I sent you a summary on water department updates, on what they're working on. And so they're, they're actually doing a lot of lead work, work with Wright and Pierce.
Yeah. Refinancing? Been talking about that for a while.
So not only, not only will it be a significantly less rate for existing debt. But if we take on new debt, it'll still be less than what we're.
Right now, we pay about a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars a year. In interest. Ninety eight thousand in principal.
And that's all from user rates, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
So uh, so imagine if we can borrow a lot more money than we need. At a lower interest rate, the rates don't go down, but we don't add any more time, and we borrowed everything to fix it.
Awesome.
So there's that, and again, I, I'm so curious to find out what Blanford's gonna get for infrastructure fund, but you know, at that point, we can. Go back to the drawing board and see. You know, and, and mind you, in our resilient master planning process, that survey, seven, the top priority for the town, seventy percent plus. Was maintaining um, quality of water. Um, so it's, it's not, not like something that's, the town doesn't support in certain areas.
Yeah, that's a good um, resource, absolutely.
So like I said, we've done, we've come a long way, we've gotten a lot done. You know, even, even, you know, our labor, he's working out really good.
Yeah, good.
Everything's mowed. Yeah, 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 I mean, all the hydrants are mowed and done, he's getting trained on, you know, doing a little bit of the flushing and stuff, and.
That's great.
He's gonna be going for the course. Yeah, yeah, he took the, the first one, the V S S, the introductory one. So he's gonna be taking the next one, so.
That's great, good.
That road, he said it's on the Chaplain list.
Yeah, remember, it's got that old name.
Title thing, so I, I don't know if you can help untangle that problem, David?
You know the old name is.
Yeah, but we officially voted and changed all this. Yeah, but we officially voted and changed all this, but.
And I, it's not. It's not changed in the, uh, chapter ninety list. So there's a portal you have to go into and I tried to start that process and I never got a response. It'd be worth talking with. Mister Stokes. And just tell him, hey, yeah, so the name change on our chapter ninety list. Doesn't match the name change. Currently, which is Jethro Jones Road. So Rainey, that Rainey was, it was, uh, stuck because if. We fix Jethro Jones Roads, we won't get reimbursed because on our chapter ninety, it's something totally different. So we gotta figure out that. It's like a revolving thing and we can't seem to solve it. Meanwhile, the road needs to get. Repaired so that we can maintain access to our plant. So, I don't know how you, what the best way is, but if you can just add that on your to do.
Thank you. All right, so we will, um, if that's it from you guys, we will kick it to finance and so go ahead, proceed with what you need to proceed with and then we'll figure out how to replace it.
Yeah, he's gonna give us a. We're gonna hopefully nail down this the next couple of days, actually, which day, Monday through the Wednesday. We're hoping, they gotta, cause they gotta get the tractor trailer in there.
Yeah, right?
Well, I tell you, I went, we had a break in the middle of that. Going up the mountain. I rented a machine and I stood it on end up there. And dug the break and I had to haul the sand up one buckle bucket at a time. I thought I was gonna be there till I was retirement age.
Yeah, that's just, it's. That's the other thing too, because, you know, at least you can't do it in the spring because it's mud season. You may get in a tractor in there in mud season.
You probably wouldn't get one in there now, is it?
It's be tough. Yeah.
All right, thank you, guys.
Smart role.
Do we have more of a GORA update?
All right. Thanks a lot.
Have a good night.
I thought you had a whole residence up there.
Okay.
We walked through it.
Show me next time.
They wanted to remove, they agreed to remove private trees.
Yeah.
And was the question. I also do want to state that, anybody has any questions, come see and make a call or whatever.
Yeah.
We can discuss. Their ideas if we want.
Okay.
My idea is, is if we can get as much as out there as possible for free.
Yeah. Yeah. And I saw, Mister Ham, I saw your email and it looked like things had worked out pretty well.
Very well, thank you.
Good.
Not done yet.
Not done yet. All right, then last, we have a resignation, um, of Judith McKinnon from Council on Aging, effective immediately. Um, so I would make a motion to accept the resignation of Judith McKinnon from Council on Aging, for a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, has your, any reason given?
Uh, no, she just says, uh, she's gonna continue to drive the seniors. Um, which is really helpful and that she'll turn in, uh, keys and anything to Joanne with the letter. So this already went to, um, the clerk?
Not yet, right?
As soon as the clerk gets it, then it will be official. Uh, on favor?
All right.
Hi. Um, Josh, do you have any new or, um, unfinished business for us?
The only new business for everyone that, that's here and might be watching at home. Um, Blanford's dementia friends information session.
Oh, yeah.
Scheduled for September thirteen, from twelve to two. We have about seventeen folks. Who are registered to participate.
Oh, that's great.
Here, uh, lunch will be provided. And so anybody, any other departments that, um. Would be interested in participating in this, to let me know so that we can, uh, get a head count. But this is great because it's just, it's, it's, it's part of our, um, basic health grant.
Yeah.
That we got and it's just to, uh, train departments and employees and volunteers. On, uh. You know. Issues around dementia, so then when we're dealing with the public, that you'll know the signs and. Know how to, uh, interact with, uh, any particular person that, that might be suffering from dementia.
So just curious, what, um, boards and commissions do we have representatives from signed up, like.
Currently?
Yeah.
Yeah, currently we have, uh. Uh, the fire chief, uh, the police chief, we have all of the C O A or majority of them at least. Um, uh, participating. We also have the, uh, assistant treasurer collector.
Okay.
Barbara, our accountant's gonna be participating. Um, I was hoping that someone in highway can. Um. There'll be lunch.
Free lunch.
Panda. Panera, Panera.
Oh, Panera.
Who else, Joanne, do you, um.
Library would be nice.
Oh, yeah, so we got Nicole and a couple of, uh, I think, Michelle.
Okay.
Um, from the library. It's, uh, Monday from. Twelve to two. This Monday.
I forgot all about it.
And we're hoping that a member from the select. I don't know if one of you guys would.
I'm gonna be gone, I'll be in Utah.
Do you want free lunch?
So we got a member from the select board. And I said that, I said you.
Yes.
So I started in Chester, um. We've been handing out elopement forms for autistic. Um, families of, with autism, dementia, Alzheimer's.
Okay.
And what that is, is the family would fill it out and, um, if we could get a photo, even better. And I vote it into our CAD system, which is our, um, dispatch controlled system. Um. And then anytime a call is either at the address or the person specific, a caution will pop up to the dispatcher.
Well, that's great.
So I'm also gonna be bringing those forms here.
Okay.
Hopefully this year. Blanford will be switching to Northland Control, which is our main. Chester.
Yeah.
We have the same one.
Yeah.
So I am gonna be hopefully. But that's coming on, like, um, so I am gonna bring those forms and talk to Margaret about it. But I'm hoping to handle that or to get those going in Blanford.
Okay, and so the only people, the only way people would know to fill it out is if they get the form. They have to do it themselves, is what I'm saying. It's not like you would know, you don't have a record.
I don't, I have no way of knowing, so that way, this way, if somebody is missing or we go to a call with somebody who has sensory issues. We can have a shut our lights to start it off before, you know, before we approach.
That's great. I would love that.
Because our dispatch has the capability to send out a text message, so anyone going.
Yeah.
Um, forget a text message and now we have the picture and the information right out before we even there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of.
I will be bringing those forms and talk to Margaret.
Another question, would it be a violation of, um. I can't think of the. Pappa, if, let's say, fire responds and they're aware that there's a person living in a household with dementia.
So once our, um, our fire department and police department are switched over to our county control, they're gonna have the same, um, ability to have that access. Cause it's gonna be the same dispatch.
Okay.
Providing and on our forms, the family member signing, signed or released that that information can be used.
Great.
Out to first responders.
Awesome. Okay, that's really great.
A lot of little neat things, like I learned. We might have to switch out the black carpets in the front entryway coming into town hall, cause apparently some folks with dementia can. Feel that that might be a pole they're gonna fall into.
Oh, I think it.
So I was like, wow, I never thought about that.
Yeah.
Now, uh, one, one of the questions that.
Is this a real question?
We have a lot of elderly people that live alone. And do we have a list of who they are and where they are? Because, uh, you know, we've had a few people that passed away in town and were found quite a few days later. And, uh, well, we had this discussion earlier with the, the lady on North Street. And, uh. I. Do we have a list or can C O A or somebody, uh. Get a list so that there can be wellness checks?
So, to my knowledge, there is no list. If the person is involved with C O A, that C O A would have that and then I could contact her and I could get that. Like I did for her.
Yeah.
Through contacting a bunch of people, we got the information. Uh, but one of the things I need to speak with Margaret about, we're doing in Chester with Chester C O A, is Triad. Um, it's the sheriff's law enforcement and the Council on Aging community, it's a triangle. Um, they have a program that they're gonna be starting. It's, um, I think the title is something to the effect of, are you okay? Or something like that. What it is, you sign up for it and you get a daily call. And you can pick the time. Um, so say nine AM works for you. Every day at nine AM, there's somebody from the sheriff's department that is gonna call you. And it's just to have a brief conversation. Are you okay? Have you taken your meds? Have you eaten? Do you need anything? It's not like an hour-long conversation. It's, so there's somebody reaching out to them at least daily. Um, right now, that's my Friday program. Um, so we've been working on that, um, and with the sheriff's department in Chester, it's something that I need to meet up with Margaret to start here. Um, so, but right now, we don't have anything in place. But there's a bunch of programs at the sheriff's department through Triad is going to be rolling out. And, um, definitely gonna be bringing it to Blanford. That's my intent. Obviously, I would have to speak with Margaret, but I, I don't see why, we wouldn't be.
We used to have, we used to have a list of. Elderly people, both. Couples and single people living alone. And if the power went out or something like that. The fire department and the police department would. Split the town up. And we'd visit every one of these people to see if they needed anything, if they wanted to. Go somewhere, we had places that. People would take them in. Uh, but it's kind of fallen by the wayside, so maybe we can work that up too.
Right, I know with, um, EverSource recently, they have, um, a program in place where if. There's someone that oxygen dependent or they need power, we can put them in as a critical infrastructure. And they would try to restore power to that house or if we have a, um, retirement community. Those places would be tried to restore it first. So I know that EverSource has that program, but I don't know how much C O A is aware of it. But I could definitely have a conversation with her.
I'll talk to our friend Chief Mortar and see if I can motivate him.
Motivating.
I say that with love.
I have one more question. Just because I, just I'm thinking this, um, thing with the censoring the lights is so interesting with the kids that I work with, um. It, would it be, so I work with a ton of kids in Southwick and if I'm talking to their family and saying, hey, this is an option, you can fill out this form. Where would I directly drive, direct them to the local police department and they can?
So I don't know, so I don't know how many police departments actually have this, um, in place, um.